Thank you for joining us for the Orlando Sentinels Editorial Board interview for Osceola County School Board District 4. And these candidates have already faced off once. They, they are the top two vote getters in the August primary. And so they are proceeding forward to the general election. And, and both of our candidates are, um, last one residents of Osceola County. Um, Heather Cahoon worked as teacher and a communications specialist for the school district. And, um, Will Fonseca has a long history of volunteering, including time as a coach in Mintford. And, um, with schools, so both of you have quite a bit of experience with local schools. And, um, and we, so we are going to go ahead and spend a little time talking about some of the issues that are before the school board. And then we'll give you a chance to make the closing statement as to why you should be the final choice. This is an open seat. The incumbent has chosen not to run for reelection. Um, one of, um, the things that every school district is wrestling with right now is recruiting teachers, um, other instructional personnel and non-instructional personnel. And, and there are, depending on the individual districts, quite a few vacancies. What do you think the school board should be doing to help recruit and retain the workers it needs to operate the schools safely and, um, for success? And let's start with, um, Mr. Fonseca.
Hello. Thank you, everyone. Coach Will Fonseca here. And I would like to start by thanking the voters for helping me come on top on the primaries. And I feel like, um, our teacher shortage is, is definitely one of our main issues. And I'm proud to be the, uh, the only candidate endorsed by the Osceola County Education Association, which is represent a good foundation of what this district is. And with that, you know, we, we've done, we've done some, some good stuff here at the state to, to help bring up pay for the introductory of new teachers. We brought up pay for, um, bus drivers and support staff. But I feel like we really need to start looking out for our veteran teachers. Our veteran teachers are the backbone of, of any foundation is, 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 um, people who've been in the career, in the position for multiple years, someone who can welcome a new teacher and someone who knows the ins and outs of what's going on. So we need to have better pay and look out for, you know, create that better morale for our veteran teachers, which is key. I think moving forward to take care of our teacher shortage, um, problem that we have.
Thank you. Ms. Cahoon.
Yeah. So again, thank you for hosting this. I think this is a great way for us to, uh, get ourselves out to the community a little better. Um, as a former teacher myself, obviously we must treat teachers as the professional professionals they are. And in turn, I think we can all agree to pay them as such. So of course, as Mr. Fonseca stated, we need to figure out a way to increase salaries for our teachers, especially those veteran teachers. You know, looking at some stats recently, um, we are, uh, you know, poised as one of the largest economies, um, across the nation. However, our teacher pay, um, ranks one of the lowest across the nation. And really in the last recent years, we've decreased, um, and, and, you know, our budget for teacher salaries. Um, even though we've allocated money there, it's always gone towards those new teachers. And, um, you know, so figuring out, yes, a way to, um, pay our veteran teachers so that they feel valued for work, the work they've done and the longevity they've had in our district is key. I think increasing morale is, is very important. You know, the conference I'm at right now is actually, it's a marketing conference because I do marketing now as a small business owner. And one of the biggest things they talk about is, um, the morale and the culture that you bring to your, uh, your employers in order to, um, have them doing, uh, really successful work for you. And I think a lot of our schools do a good job at that. You know, I follow them on social media and our back to school time. You know, you saw these welcome back, um, kickoff for our teachers, but I think some schools are, you know, struggling with that. The administrators might not be, um, as keen to knowing how to really lift up their team. So I think, uh, the district can work on, um, providing more resources to our administrators to make their employees feel valued at their schools.
Thank you. I wanted to go ahead and ask a follow-up on that question. That's very related. You all both sort of touched on morale. Uh, teacher pay has, uh, been low, historically low. We've advocated for higher salaries, but it's always been low. And teachers are fleeing Florida classrooms in a way they never have before. We've written about how they can't even find enough substitutes. They're going to temp agencies to staff classes. Uh, you mentioned morale, but I'm wondering, why do you think specifically when it deals with morale, why are teachers leaving these jobs and is Florida having so much trouble filling them? And we can start with you, Ms. Cahoon.
Um, so, you know, from talking to my peers who still work in the classrooms, I think one of the biggest things is they're not treated as professionals. Um, I don't know if you saw, uh, there had been an article, not an article, an ad run in our local newspaper a couple, uh, months back. And it was one of the cultural war attacks on our teachers. And it was saying that, um, you know, uh, uh, gender orientation was being talked about in kindergarten and things like that. And, you know, teachers took that to heart because that's not happening in our classes. You know, our teachers are professionals. They're tasked with a job at hand. They're provided standards by the state in order to do their job and give their students that quality education that, um, they all deserve. And, uh, they feel attacked by the different things that are happening around them. And I think that's really bringing them down because they're not able to fully do the job that they went to school for, that they earned a degree for and got certified in, and really are professionals in, in their sense. Um, so I think that we've got to take a stand for our teachers and really show that we support them. We treat them as professionals. And obviously one of the first ways to do that is by increasing their pay. Um, because, you know, everybody is struggling to make ends meet these days. And, you know, um, with the fact that, you know, our pay increases are, are very minimal, you know, just enough to get by type of thing. Um, it's really caused a challenge for us.
Thank you, Mr. Fonseca.
I think, uh, the number one thing, um, uh, Ms. Cahoon touched on some good subjects, but, uh, to respect, definitely the respect for the veteran teachers. And that's where, uh, we give the tools that they need. Um, one of the things I've seen and teachers have told me is that, that the parent involvement, we, we've gotten attacked by parents, but we, we took away the tool, uh, from them on communicating. Let's go back to the, um, the parent teacher works, um, days. Right now you get, you go to school and the first day of school or the first week of school, you'll meet a teacher, but then we have nothing in place from that, the day after that. And I think where, where you have the problems with the discipline in the classrooms, um, working together can really be talked about on those specific days. If we set those days aside and the parents can come in. And then not only the parents, now we set up as a school district, we set up some educational classrooms so that parents are confused with anything going on in the district. They can now go in and get those questions answered right from the school and, and an educational format. You know, I think that's key. Kids are excited to, to, to show their parents, teachers, uh, that they, that they've communicated and they connected with. And I think it's key that the parents see that interaction aside from just getting an email or a call. Um, so I think building that bond, giving them the tools, giving them back the respect. Teachers, teachers want to teach, you know, and, and right now they have a lot of red tape with testing and giving them the ability to, to teach and communicate and work with the parents. I think that's the key to, to, to helping that problem.
Thank you very much.
Well, and, and to follow up on that, um, we, there's been quite a bit of discussion of, um, the tools that parents have to manage. And that's been one of the big argument, argument points in the, um, and the issue of, um, what they call the culture wars. Do you think Osceola parents have the tools they need to manage their students, their, their own children's experience without going into removing instructional materials from all students, for example, or, or, um, or restricting the experience for every child? Do they have the tools they need? And I'll start with then Ms. Cahoon.
Um, you know, you mentioned earlier that I worked on the communication side of the district. Um, and, you know, I think that there are some great tools that are available to our parents and our families to be involved with their students. Um, while I was there, we actually implemented, um, the software Remind, uh, Remind? Is that what it is? I'm sorry. I'm drawing a blank on, on what it's named. But a, a tool for our teachers and our parents to have direct connection. So, you know, it syncs with the focus system that is their, um, their schedule. And, uh, at the beginning of the school year, you're opted into all of your child's classes and your teachers can communicate via text message to you. So I get messages from my students, uh, my personal children. I have three kids that attend schools, um, in Osceola, and I get messages from their teachers, sometimes daily, uh, sometimes a weekly, like here's what's coming or a recap. Um, I've loved the Friday afternoon ones that I'm getting from my girls' teachers at Horizon where they kind of recap what they've done this week and kind of how to prepare for the week ahead. Um, I also think that we definitely have tools in place and systems in place in order to allow parents to have that parental choice and the things that their students have access to. The district set up the, um, the system with the media center where you as a parent can choose to say, I give full access to my child, um, to the books and resources in the media center. I give limited access. I want to know what my child is checking out before they check it out, or I don't give my child access at all. So I think parents do have control over saying what their student, um, is, uh, allowed to have access to. And I think that's something that our parents really want. Um, we also have in place the curriculum review, um, um, option. So that if there is some piece of curriculum out there, even though, like I said before, standards come from the state. Um, if there's some kind of resource that's been used in a classroom and a teacher, a student or a parent, you know, has concern over it, they can submit that for review. And I think that's a great way to make sure that we are, um, you know, following the different laws that have come down from Tallahassee, um, and that are placed on us.
Thank you. Um, Coach Fonseca?
No, I think we, we definitely have, I've, I've, and myself as emailed teachers, texted teachers. I think that, um, the, the access that we have on our books is, is definitely a start where we, like, uh, Ms. Cahoon said, uh, full access, limited access and no access. Um, but we also need to, to continue to educate the, the parents on what those specific, um, things mean. And then, uh, maybe even go into further on age appropriate for each grading, uh, elementary, middle and high school. Something that might need full access at a certain grade, might not be at a, at a higher level, at a, at a higher grade level. Um, one thing we got to keep in mind is that parents are busy. They got work. They have a lot going on. And sometimes, uh, the technology aspect is, is great, but that one-on-one interaction, I still feel is, is key. And, and bringing back to what I said before on the, the parent teacher meeting and having the educational little classroom setup is key on, if a parent has gotten the email, um, but they're busy with life, um, they're busy with work and, and getting kids ready for the next day, get, uh, getting meals cooked. What does school access mean? What kind of books? And give them the example on what that is. Give an example of a curriculum, um, the transparency as a curriculum. Um, if they want to dive deep in person, I, I always feel is key.
I'd like to ask you guys a little bit about why, uh, you individually decided to run for this office. And I'm going to tweak the question a little bit for each of you individually. Mr. Fonseca, I believe two years ago, uh, you had interviewed with our editorial board when you were running for property appraiser. I'm sometimes interested in people who are running for offices that seem pretty, uh, widely different in, in my estimation. I'm curious about how you get from property appraiser to school board and what the connection is.
Well, um, my professional background includes, uh, real estate and mortgage loan officer. Um, so I get to see a lot of, um, questions and, and uneducation of, of what the community has and understanding their, their day-to-day, everyday stuff and, and as simple as home taxes or, or their, you know, what the property appraiser includes in their letter and, and how it works out. So being a coach and being someone involved in the community, I'm always looking for ways to take that to the next level. And using my professional experience, um, to run for property appraiser was, was the connection there. And now as a coach and dealing with the, and working with the youth, mentoring the youth of all ages, high school level. I'm a coach for Special Olympics. I see the kids of disability. And I see many examples of taking a kid with, um, little to no talent or just beginning, um, who can't pitch a ball, for example, and then bring them to that level where they're proficient at it. And I see the success and I get to see how every child is motivated different. And that works also with the child with disability. I get to see the interaction with all, all, all works of, uh, of different parents. Um, some are, are one way and some are another. Some come to me and ask me for advice on how to, how to interact. I mean, how to get their kid motivated. And I get to see that implemented and directly correlate with education all the time. Discipline in classroom. I see how it motivates them to, to want to do schoolwork. And that's what brought me to running for school board, bringing my passion of working with the youth for many years. I've been doing that as a volunteer for many years and, and, and bring it to the next level as District 4's next school board member.
Okay. Thank you. And Ms. Cahoon, I'll tweak this a little bit for you. Obviously you mentioned you'd been in, um, education, uh, for quite a while, but something must have prompted you to want to run, uh, this year. I think you mentioned you were also doing some marketing, uh, entrepreneurship. Is, is this sort of about, uh, occupational opportunity for you? Or is it, uh, what, what happened this go-around that made you decide to run, want to run?
Yeah. So, um, like you mentioned, I, uh, do have an experience in education. I was a teacher for nearly 10 years at Pleasant Hill Elementary School. Uh, it was actually, um, my fourth grade teacher who hired me, uh, as principal when I started my teaching career in Osceola. Um, I left teaching for a short time, um, just because of a new opportunity arose. And that's where I let, got into the marketing world. Um, and, uh, a couple of years later, the school district hired a social media marketing person. And that's how I got myself back into education. It merged my two worlds together as one. Um, and then, uh, because of COVID-19, you know, kind of, you know, people's lives shifted and, and priorities shifted. And I thought, you know, I'd like to allow my time, uh, with my family a little bit more. And so that's when I started my small business, doing marketing for local small businesses. And at that time was when we kind of had a shift in our school board. So I don't know if you've paid attention to things over the last 18 plus months or so. Um, but, you know, we had a few new members come on board and in doing so, um, things really got chaotic, um, in our, in our county and in our school board. And, you know, the focus I feel has, you know, moved away from our students and away from our teachers. And it's become very political. Um, and as, uh, you, uh, mentioned, you know, Mr. Fonseca has run for different offices before. This is my first time running. I've never done this. It was something that, you know, I've, I've learned to say, never say never. Uh, I never thought I'd leave teaching. I never thought I'd leave the agency I was working for. Um, you know, and I never thought I would run for office, but, you know, I saw the call, um, to serve my community with my educational experience and expertise, um, and really try to help bring professionalism, integrity and respect back to our, our school board. Um, put the focus back on our students and our teachers because that's really what it should be about. And, you know, so my passion is education and, uh, my priority now has become ensuring a really good educational system in Osceola.
Okay. And if you don't mind, I want to ask one follow-up and then I'll turn it over to Chris for the rest, rest of the interview. Um, because you just mentioned, there has been some chaos. Uh, we have gotten some of the weirdest letters and guest columns I've seen about politics and they, in recent years, and they had to do with the school board, which is not normally the case. And I, I think most people would appreciate that you all saying you don't want to, you know, uh, exacerbate that. But I'm wondering specifically, what do you plan on doing, bringing to the school board to tamp that down? If that is one of your goals and we can go back to you on that front, Heather. Ms. Cahoon.
Yeah. So I really think that we just need to hone in and focus back in on, you know, the district has a strategic plan that has been outlined for a number of years and updated, um, as time has moved, you know, things have changed. There was, um, at one point, you know, safety and security became a really huge topic, um, in the strategic plan after Marjorie Stoneman Douglas. And, um, you know, COVID-19 happened. And so that became a priority, um, in, in the strategic plan. So, you know, really focusing in and honing in on those things that, um, we, um, you know, uh, need to be focused on in order to move the district forward. I, you know, there's just really too much politics on the board. I do not plan to engage in any of the, uh, political rhetoric, the cultural rhetoric, the things that are really taking our focus off. So I think, you know, when sitting on the dais and those discussions come to play, I think we need to figure out a way to shut them down and move forward on what agenda we have in, in hand and what priorities need to be, um, talked about and discussed and voted on in order to make sure we're meeting the needs of, of our students and our teachers.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fonseca.
Uh, one thing with the board is that we're definitely going to have two school board members for the next, uh, two years. Um, that I think Ms. Cahoon is, um, saying brought the imbalance to the board. And I, and I've talked to them. I've talked to the new, uh, newly, uh, winners of District 1 and District, uh, 5. And I feel that I've always been clean and positive, even, even as a coach, um, running in, in my prior race. I, I ran against Commissioner Grebe, um, where we stood our, we, we kept our race clean. And after the race, I'm able to call her and she even appointed me on a board of the charter review. Um, so those are the type of relationships that even though we're on the board and even though we might see things different, I have that experience of still being able to work in a professional, respectful setting. And I think as long as everyone on the board feels that everyone is being fair, I think we'll see less of Osceola County in the news and get focused back on what's important. Those are, those are our students, our community, our teachers, and that should be key. You know, I was looking at our strategic plan. One thing we failed to mention on that, as simple as, um, students with disability. We didn't mention that in our strategic plan. So, you know, bringing it back to that, what's important and figuring out all the key points. Um, I feel like my coaching ability and, and dealing with all aspects of the community is going to be key to, to bringing the board forward. Um, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, and one of the, one of the things that has surfaced, um, with some of the, some of the rhetoric back and forth is that some people have focused on, um, Deborah Pace's role and performance as superintendent. She has been in that position for reasonably long period of time. What is your impression of her performance as superintendent? Are you satisfied that she's the right person for that job? And, and let's start with, uh, uh, Mr. Fonseca.
So, uh, Dr. Pace has, has come a long way. She's gone through the pandemic. Um, and now I think we need to, we need to remember that. Look at her performance before the pandemic and then look at it, um, after the pandemic and see truly, um, what the results are there. Um, comparing that will be the key to, to really getting the answer. Um, after November, when the board is, I, I feel is truly balanced, we'll get to see a whole nother Dr. Pace. And I, and I'm excited to see what that brings. Um, she seems to be professional and I think that, uh, her experience, um, on the board has, has done well. Is it time to, to move on? I think it's kind of what you're asking. I'm not sure of that answer a hundred percent. I've been focused on campaigning, dealing with the, uh, talking with the teachers, community members. And I've got feedback on both sides of that aisle where some people are, are happy with Dr. Pace and some people are not so happy and they feel like it's time to move on. So I look forward to making that decision, um, being able to get the facts and see exactly as a school board member, um, what is being done and what could be done better. And comparing that to other counties, we don't have to, um, remake the wheel, right? We can just compare to other counties, see where they're at, see how they're handling things, how their superintendent is handling things. And then compare to see where we're at. And that's truly going to be the fair way to, to give you that answer.
Ms. Cahoon?
Um, thank, uh, so yeah, uh, you know, I come across probably as a really positive person and I consider myself to actually have a really good working relationship with Superintendent Pace because when I did work in the communications team, I worked, um, pretty much directly under her during that time. Um, but I don't mistake that for any sort of weakness or, or, uh, fact that, you know, um, people have said, you know, I'll be honest with you, I didn't get the OCA endorsement as a former teacher, which kind of really stung. Um, but it was because they felt I was too pro-Pace. And, you know, I feel like she has, um, some great experience. She was a principal in our district. I mean, she's a product of our district. She knows our district in and out. She was a principal. She graduated from school here. Um, she was an administrator here. Um, some of our best principals actually worked under her when she was at, uh, Pointe City High. Um, and, uh, you know, I think that really says a lot for her experience and her knowledge of education. Um, so I think that she is the right person to be leading our district. I also, um, you know, uh, when we were crafting our COVID-19, um, uh, plan, uh, back when COVID-19 first hit, our district actually, um, you know, was commended by the state for how quickly and how comprehensive the plan was that we had put into play. And that was all led by Dr. Pace and her leadership team. I think she's got, um, some great people that are at the helm, helping make these decisions and really, um, steering our, our district in the right direction. We, we're moving towards an A district and you can see that in the path that's been laid out since the time she was appointed superintendent.
Thank you. Um, I have one more question before we get to, um, uh, our, our ending statements. And this is one that I love to ask because it, it just makes everybody happy to talk about it. Um, Osceola County has a wide array of, um, programs that allow students to explore careers, um, get college credit, um, even leave, leave high school with certificates and sometimes diplomas, um, degrees, advanced college degrees. So what more do you think, um, Osceola should be doing in the, um, career, technical and, and college advance, um, area? Where are those opportunities? And, and let's start, Ms. Cahoon?
Yeah. So I mentioned before, I'm a parent of three very different students. And actually I've got twin girls. Um, and they are the most different of all three of my children. Um, you know, I have one to two kids that are definitely college-bound. You know, that is going to be the right path for them. My son's at Neo City Academy in the engineering track and, you know, he definitely is on the path towards, um, you know, uh, doing something, um, where he's going to need a four-year degree. Um, but one of my daughters, you know, struggles with a learning disability and, um, you know, college is probably not going to be the right fit for her. You know, she has to, um, really work hard to be successful. But she's actually probably my most entrepreneurial, uh, spirit, uh, student, you know? So a career and technical ed path will be great for her. Um, so I think we definitely need to continue to expand access, um, and even earlier access. You know, we have Avid, um, the Avid program in our school district. And that's really, um, a program to open students up, especially students that haven't, um, had families that have gone on to attend college or, or, um, trade school or whatnot, to really, uh, show them what opportunities are out there for them. And that's done at an earlier level from elementary school up. Um, I think one of the things we could really do is engage our partners and our stakeholders and fill in those missing gaps of, you know, uh, what partner out there has some kind of program that really could, um, push a student into a career for them? And do we have a, a pathway for that in our school district? If not, how can we engage those partners to help create a pathway? Um, I also, you know, really as a, as a product of a school, our school district, myself and someone who came back and taught here, I think our Future Teachers Academy is off to a good start, but it has a lot of room to grow. I think we really could, um, try to find those students in Osceola who have a passion for education like I did at an early age. Um, and really grow them into the teachers that we need to fill our seats. So that would, you know, help also with, um, the retention or the, uh, you know, the teacher shortage that we have. If we, if we can get more of those students involved at an earlier age, um, and get them connected in and, uh, with Valencia and with UCF, um, and then right back here to teach.
All right. Ms. Fonseca?
Yes, um, as Ms. Cahoon mentioned, some excellent programs. We do have the automotive program, construction academy, the teachers academy. And I feel that we always can expand. Yes, we have, um, we have the opportunity where a student can pick a school. Uh, but sometimes a student doesn't understand what exactly the program entails. And I think we need to bridge that gap and that's working with community, um, businesses. One example, I want to say with school board member, uh, Melendez, uh, brought up where the new construction being done at the, um, at the schools currently will then intern slash hire students from our district. So that, um, that gives them that hands-on experience. So setting up, one of my biggest platform things is that we have a lot of students leaving high school and have no clue what they want to do next in life. I get those calls all the time, um, from some of the, the students I've worked with. And I think the answer to that is building the relationship with businesses where we develop more internships. Um, during the summer, during the school, our high school, our last two years of high school should have more internships where they get the hands-on experience. My, my son, um, he struggled, you know, he recently graduated and he struggled with what he wants to do next. And I think if there was four or five internships with construction, automotive, uh, electrical, that he could have done some hands-on for that week or two and got a little taste of it, would have been key. Then would have put him in the right program at the right school, which we have in place. Most of, most of our high schools has one or two vocational programs. And that would have breached the gap perfectly for him. Now he's in technical school. Um, he's going to OTAC where he's studying electrical program. And I think, um, I think the internship And I think um, I think the internship is is the key, the Osceola success on looking out for the students that are not college-bound.
Okay, um, I just wanted to tell you both how much I've enjoyed um having the time to share your views on these issues. Um, you have both have presented, both those with some clear choices, but it's, but I, but I think a lot of plenty of information that they need to to um to go forward with this race. Um, if you could just take a minute, minute and a half, something like that and just give us, give us your elevator pitch as to why you are the best person for this seat. Um, and we will start with um Mr. Fonseca.
Again, thank you for uh for the opportunity to to be able to do this process. I think educating the the community is definitely a key, and I thank you guys for putting this on. Um, again, my name is Coach Will Fonseca, and I get the title coach because I've worked in the community for 10 plus years with all ages, um, all backgrounds, and I've worked with students uh with disability as well. And I want to take that experience and bring it to the school district. I feel like that school district currently needs someone fair, who's been out in the community for many years and just didn't pop up for for an election. Um, our school district currently, we're about to have a teacher in District Five, and I think District Four needs a coach. Um, so we have our teacher in place and giving me the opportunity to continue to mentor the youth, uh, work within the community and think outside the box to bring up the morale, look out for our teachers um that Osceola County uh needs right now is something that I could bring to the table in a fair, respectable respectable manner, as I've shown in the past, working with everyone in the community.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Kahoon.
Um, again, uh, like my opponent said, thank you for hosting this roundtable and allowing your readers and our voters to really better understand um who we are and why we're running for school board. Um, as I've shared a number of times in this call, yes, I am a product of the district. I was a teacher in our district. I'm raising three students in our uh district public schools. Um, and education is a passion of mine and a priority of mine. And you know, um, I I would have to say I don't think I've just popped out of nowhere um to run for the this seat. You know, my my background shows that, you know, I've been committed to our community um for just as long as I've lived here as well. Uh, and uh, so I think that, you know, I I really um have those ties that show I'm in this for the right reason. Um, I mentioned before too, I'm a successful small business owner in our community, and I do live by that live, work, play mentality. Um, uh, one of my favorite hashtags to share on social media when I'm showing the things my family and I do around Osceola is uh hashtag Kasimi is cool because Kasimi really is cool. We have a lot to offer. And I think that we um can continue to add to um the great things about Osceola. And education is one of the best places to start, is building, uh, you know, continuing to build out that solid foundation in education um so that people want to live, work and play just like I do. Um, you know, I'm not a career politician or even a career candidate, uh, first time running for office. Um, and like I said, it's not about politics for me. It's not about cultural wars for me, Facebook lights for me. It's really just about um bringing the focus back to teachers, back to students, back to education and moving the district forward. And I really do think I bring the experience um to the dais and I have the advantage of starting day one of us as a school board member with the depth and knowledge of our district that my opponent just doesn't have. And I think, you know, I can just jump in um right, right from the start and really um get to work.
Well, I thank you both so much for taking the time to meet with us. Um, and and we um think you've given voters a lot, lot to chew on. And um I wish you both the best of luck.